Good morning, welcome to the July twenty-second regular session of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Roll call please.
Laylin.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Brant.
Here.
Curtinback.
Here.
Paul.
Here. Please join in a moment of silence and reflect on this morning's actions. If you're able, please stand to join in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received as proposed or amended.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item two, public comments, this is time on the agenda for anyone to speak on anything that's not on this morning's agenda.
Morning Supervisors, Justin Jensen, Lieutenant General Director, so just want to say thank you, always like to listen to what's going on in the county. So ever federal issues that come across your way, send them our way, always good to see you guys, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Josh. Item three, claims of payments, this is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approved expenditures that the county authority be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as a law.
Second.
Alright, thank you, good morning Board, our total bill payment today is six hundred nine thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents. Out of that, three thousand one hundred forty dollars and fifty-six cents is from the Sheriff's forty fund. This is a smaller bill payment today. We have a few, we have quite a few large payments for juvenile detention, I just thought I would point that out. Northeast Iowa, or North Iowa juvenile detention, forty-two thousand three fifty plus for June and another seventeen thousand and eighty dollars. So there's quite a large amount there. Danko Construction, we are purchasing culvert liners for fifty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars. And let's see, in terms of American Rescue Plan funds, we are making the final payment on the playgrounds to Play Power for forty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. We're making a payment to Aspro for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail for thirty-six thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and four cents. Older contracting or bridge patching, and this is not Arfa, for thirty-four thousand one fifty-two and ninety-two cents. And that appears to be the only largest significant ones, everything appears to be in order, any questions today?
Alright, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Laylin.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Item four, receive project updates from the Department Heads and elected officials.
Good morning Board, Kathy Anklis, County Engineer. We are continuing to catch up on mowing of the paper road system and gravel road system as well, our contract work is going well. Ragbri, of course, will be overnight in Cedar Falls on Thursday, Thursday night. On Friday, Friday, they will be making their way across the county primarily on Dunkerton Road, we've been working with the Sheriff's Office quite a bit. We will work with them on Thursday and Friday, our secondary road staff will be out and about, helping out as we can, trying to keep the bicyclists safe as well as the, you know, our people in traffic who travel our roads, trying to keep everybody safe. Another note, I have been contacted by a company out of the UK that specializes in natural hydrogen exploration. They are interested in doing some exploration in Buchanan, Bayett, Reamer, Blackhawk, Clayton Counties. They are, we are, the engineers are meeting with them later this week to get more information, I really don't know that much about the process. They, they would like to get a permit to travel on our roads, so we'll be finding more out about that and letting you know how that might impact the county. Can I answer any questions at this time?
On the Ragbri route?
Yes.
Do we have a, much for pothole fixing, that sort of stuff, just sort of general readiness?
So after they did, after Ragbri did the, the ride, the initial ride at the beginning of June, I think.
Yes.
They gave us a list of corrections and we were able to go out and address the, address those.
Pretty standard for when Ragbri comes through.
Yes, in fact, Dunkerton Road has been, a lot of it has been resurfaced, some of it very recently, but it's in pretty good shape. There, there's a small section that's older concrete that we had to go and place some cold mix, so it's in pretty good condition now, in good condition.
Thank you. Kathy, the thing on the hydrogen, that was for transportation of hydrogen?
Uh, it's to look for hydrogen in the ground, is the way I understand it.
Exploration, okay.
I don't know a whole lot more about it, but I will certainly let you know.
Yeah, be interested, okay. Thank you. Any other Department Heads or electeds?
We have Bendela Gardell here today with Urban Services to talk about this.
Hi, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead Ben.
Okay, good morning Board, Bendela Gardell updating you on the Washburn sewer system. The Washburn sewer system and lagoon are working great, the grounds are well maintained. We have had a large number of locate requests this summer. A few projects that have driven this are fiber optic communication network that went through Washburn Road and Laporte Road. And then a second project of the two eighteen overlay project that went all the way through Laporte Road north to south. That hasn't happened yet, but they did some pre-work with some drain tiling and that required, like I said, a large number of locates. I think we had something, somewhere in the sixties range in May and then thirty-five or thirty-seven in June. As far as service call requests, I don't have a complete tally to update you right now, but we did have an overnight or late night power outage that caused three pump stations to have a gasket that got pushed out of its location and caused service calls for me. So when the power's restored and water's been used, these pumps all start at the same time. This caused an overpressure and just blew these gaskets out, so I was there taking care of those for one night and that was three calls in just one night. Next thing is the project to add erosion rock was completed, this was a repair for settling and it approved, improved the appearance of the banks. The fence project that was done earlier this year is completed, we have the lagoon manhole and valve project completed now. The pump panel project is seeing progress again, I did personally have some competing priorities that caused a delay in progress, but I do have a plan of completing five per week and with around two-thirds of the panels remaining, I do have a new completion proposed date of December thirty-first this year. I talked to Michelle about that and would like to get that change considered soon. On June seventeenth, we did have a DNR inspection, this was a randomized inspection that happens between four and five-year intervals. Matt from the DNR visited with me, did a physical sweep of the property and the discharge point for Washburn. We went over monthly reports and documentation and from this report, we have twelve required actions and eleven recommended, recommended actions. And today I just reviewed quickly the required actions because it does require me to respond with via letter by August seventh. So I will be taking care of that, but I just wanted to go over the required stuff with you real quick. Number one, submit DMRs on or before the fifteenth of every month, I did miss two of these in the previous five-year cycle. I was waiting on samples at that point and they want me to submit what I have and then resubmit with the, with the sample reporting after that. Number two is sample correctly per the parameters. There was some discrepancy on our permit about the frequency of influent samples. I interpreted it as every quarter, their interpretation, interpretation is every three months and the wording is every three months. So if I did a January sample, I couldn't wait till May, I had to do an April sample. So we're going by that ninety-day window instead of a quarterly sample on that. There's a couple of other things wording wise, but I won't get it too in-depth with that, but it's all cleared up now and we will be doing everything we need to as far as proper to the, the permit that we have. Annual nitrogen reporting, I did miss that a couple of times. That is a one-time per year reporting and it's kind of random, it's in a February report. We go through the past year's discharges and tell them how much nitrogen we discharged into the Cedar River. Number four, water, water flows within the design capacity, now we did have a day or two in this five-year stretch, it wasn't very much, but we did go over the single daily maximum intake for the lagoon cell. This can cause lagoon, lagoons to rise too high, which we have not had overall in a six-month period. But it is one thing they watch for is, is daily design capacity. And we are taking actions as far as sump pumps being pumped into the system. We do have a history of inspecting places on a needed basis for sump pumps that enter the system, this adds to our daily flow and those sump pumps are not allowed to be connected. So getting those disconnected in a, in a proper manner and inspecting when we need to will be important. Number five, a sludge plan, they want a, a plan for us if we need to dredge the pond. Now it's something we've talked about before is dredging the pond, but we really need to do what's called a sludge judge, which is me or someone contractor going out on the pond in a, in a boat and using a device called a sludge judge to measure the depth of the sludge blanket. And that will tell us how much sediment is at the bottom of the pond. When we reach between thirty-three to fifty percent, it's time to dredge that and that can be very costly. So something we need to save up for and talk about ahead of time. But the sludge plan is basically what are we going to do with that sludge once, once we get it out of the pond? And it's going to take a dredging company to tell us that. But if we have five years' worth of more storage, they allow us to just put that off and, and consider it, you know, in the next five-year period. But it, the first step is getting that sludge judging done, so I will be looking into that here soon with a conversation with Michelle on how we're going to do that. Number six, the influent manhole repair, which is now done, he saw that there was equipment there in June, but just last week we, we hooked up the system to the new manhole. So I'll get him photos of all this and confirm all of the progress within the response that I make. Number seven, repair burrowing man, animal holes, this was right around that influent manhole. I've repaired basically everything around the outside, but the manhole I knew was going to get dug up, so there was some old holes that just kind of stayed there and those are all fixed now. Number eight, he wanted me to plant grass around the tops of the banks, so inside the, the banks of the lagoon pond, there is riprap rock, it's called erosion rock. We, we can't mow the, in the top of the bank because the mower would obviously hit this rock and cause issues. So we spray the weeds and that also kills the grass. So he wanted me to plant grass around the outsides, I'll be doing that here this week. It's going to take quite a while because it is the entire perimeter of all three banks that need this. Number nine, warning signage installation, and this is caused by our new fence, we had just gotten the signs the day before or the day of the inspection and I hadn't had time to get hardware to put these up, but we will be getting those installed, also conversed with Michelle about this one. Lock, number ten is lock the flow meter pit, this is a device at the edge of town where we have our flow meter and the pit just happened to not have a lock on it and I will be getting a lock for that, but I want to have the same keyed lock as we have for the gate at the lagoon, so we just have a more efficient type of key system there. So I need to get a vendor that has the ability to order specific, excuse me, specifically keyed locks. Number eleven, pH testing to be done within fifteen minutes of a sample draw, I have been doing this, he didn't see me do it, it was just something important because of, if we go back to number two, it was the parameters of sampling. I was interpreting and our old DMR had pH samples taken at the time of our discharge samples. Now, when we got a new, new DMR permit, they changed that to once per week during discharge. So he was just being thorough with this, making sure that I know I need to test the pH on our sample draws. Number twelve, the final one, determined manufacturer's recommended, recommended, excuse me, calibration of the flow meter. This is the device at the edge of town that is not locked properly. The manufacturer's manual does not have a calibration frequency stated on there. You know, no schedule really or recommendation, so I did call Siemens, it's a Siemens Mag five thousand meter and I got no answer at the time, I have not tried to call them again, but I will be getting a verbal confirmation that there is no calibration schedule for that before I respond. But like I said, this response needs to be submitted by August seventh, but I want to get a lot of these things taken care of before I do that. So I'll be formulating that here in about a week, once I get the signs up and grass seed spread, get a lock put on the meter pit and just basically respond to each and every one of these, these items. So like I said, next meeting that I'm at, I will go over the recommendations, some of those are, are very vague and easy to take care of. But that's what I have for an update for you, if you have other question, if you have questions now, I can answer them, otherwise email or call me sometime.
Got a couple of questions. Ben, this is Rich, I'm new to the board, so I'm trying to get a grasp of all the work that you do out there. Personally, I've been out there, looked at the controllers, how many are there and how many are done to, how many are left to do, a specific number?
There are a hundred and forty-seven pump panels, we have seventy-five-ish of those are duplexes and then the others are simplexes. I don't exactly remember a number, there's around forty-four of them done now, around a third of them and then I guess the remaining number will be a hundred and three, something like that, left to do.
Is there any warranty on those things that we need to worry about that we're timing out on?
No, nope, they, they, they do have a one-year warranty from the time of installation and those, that installation will be reported obviously to you guys as a final, a final report. I'd like to, I'd like to get all the serial numbers on, on paper for you guys so that we know where, where they're installed and whatnot. So all of those, all those things will be coming.
And then, Ben, how much time do you spend specifically just on the Washburn? Is it fifty percent, eighty percent, a hundred percent?
Of, of my, my personal working time?
Yes.
Oh, I really never thought about that too much. It's probably thirty to forty percent of my, my total time of what I do, I, I'm self-employed, so I do have other things happening. But with this project, it, it, that does ramp that up quite a bit. So if you're talking non, just contracted stuff, probably around thirty percent. When it comes to the panels, that's going to put me, put me there at eighty to, you know, I would say seventy to ninety percent of the time, I do have things, other things I'm going to have to be doing. But if you're talking just contracted yearly maintenance, aside from projects, around thirty to thirty-five percent, I would say, but.
I would like an update in October to see how you're doing on those control panels.
Absolutely, yeah, and I can, I can come back before then to update you on this, I would like to come back and, and update you on the DNR inspection because of how serious of a nature that is, so I would definitely be back before October, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright.
Ben, this is Linda, my question is real, as far as you said a response is here in August, like the seventh, I believe?
Yes.
Is, is that going to have some of those that are in progress or you're working on those or is that, they expect you to take care of most of this by the seventh?
They generally wouldn't require us to have any of this done before then. The sludge judging part, I will say he verbally mentioned he wanted that done by the end of the year. That was number, number five on our required list, but I do plan on doing that. I don't know if I'll get it done before August seventh in my response, but I, I do want to talk to Michelle about it because it does take some time and it's not a part of our regular contract, but I do feel like I can do it at a, you know, generally cheaper rate than we'd have any one contract come do it. If we need to bid that out, that's, that's going to be up to you guys. But as far as everything else, like getting a lock, that'll be done, breeding the grass seed done, that'll be done, the signs will be up. So I'll do, I'll do everything that time allows, but none of it really has to be done right away. It's just, we have to have a plan for each one and a timeframe. So if I was to say, you know, the, the first one, like submit the DMRs, well, I've, I've done that since, you know, since the thing, so we can say that's completed and we understand that the DMRs need to be submitted by the fifteenth. So I'll get the small stuff done, some of them are already done with the manhole replacement. The burrowing animal holes, we've got those replaced, that looks actually really good up there, I'm not sure if you guys have been there. So that was just completed last week and looks great. So the response will be, yes, we'll, we'll put a timeframe on each and every single one of these, so.
Great, and then I assume you'll probably, I know in the, in the past you've done some of this and copied the board or at least forwarded the information that you submit, so we see kind of the actual information that's been submitted, was that good?
Yes, you will, I will send it to Michelle, sometimes this stuff requires a board signature, I don't think it will. But they just need to know that we're, we are in communication about it and that you guys, I mean, I'm really actually responding on your behalf technically, so. As the owners of the system, so.
Well, I appreciate that, like I said, having the report and then if we have any other questions individually, we can call or contact you because it sounds like you're going to be very busy for the next month or so, but I was going to say, it still would be great, I know Rich mentioned October, but maybe after you get the, everything filed and feel pretty much on top of it, like maybe in September, kind of provide an update.
Absolutely, that would be no, no problem.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, anyone else?
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Unless there's anything else, I'm going to move on to number five. Minutes approved for the July fifteenth meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Item six, the consent agenda, listed items will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Brant.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Laylin.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item seven A, a resolution that the lowest responsible bid in the amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-one cents received from Office Concepts LLC of Cedar Falls, Iowa for the furniture. Set up and installation of furniture for Phase B of the Pine Crest renovation project located at one four zero seven Independence Avenue. Be approved, that the chair be authorized to sign the contract contingent upon receipt of a certificate of insurance as recommended by Waring Givin, facilities director.
Good morning Board, Nancy Tufflon, Vision Architecture, I'm going to pass out a copy of our bid recommendation letter. So after contacting Office Concepts as they came in as the lowest bidder, they met all of the, submitted, they submitted a comprehensive proposal that meets the project specifications, budgetary constraints, and this presents the most cost-effective solution. However, after notifying that they were the lowest bidder, they did request a fifty percent deposit. In previous instances, Envision has experienced a deposit ranging anywhere from twenty to fifty percent. And while this is, could be chosen to be negotiated, Office Concepts has informed us that this is due to market volatility and just the conditions that are currently existing, so they can secure pricing. They will purchase and store all of the furniture until it is installed and then as furniture is installed at the remainder, remainder portion of the price, will be built at installation. And then, as I have in the, the recommendation letter, the deposit is not required under the bidding terms, but it is something we see, especially now with the current market conditions. And here if you have any additional questions on that, suggest a deposit.
Anybody else? Questions or reservations, otherwise entertain a motion on the resolution.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second, roll call please.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylin.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You good? Item seven B, resolution to approve and updated, proposed 2080 agreement between Blackhawk County, the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office, City of Waterloo and Waterloo Police Department for the financing and use of a proposed evidence intake facility to be constructed, owned and maintained by the City of Waterloo for which Project Blackhawk County will pay seven hundred fifty thousand dollars toward construction of the facility and for which Project Blackhawk County will make annual payments for fifty thousand, sorry, fifty years towards the operating expenses of the facility pursuant to its severance.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Alright, good morning Board, Nancy Flick, County Sheriff. I know this issue kind of keeps coming up, we approved this back at the end of May. Kind of three different components, I know this part is for the 2080, but with the three, they're kind of all rolled into one really, realistically. I know a couple of you throughout the process have asked for some more definitive numbers and Linda, especially you, where I know it's one of the reasons why you voted no on it the last time around. So even though this is really about more of the updated ones that Waterloo City Council approved here a couple of weeks ago, I do want to present you with a little bit more information that's going to help, it's probably more related to the operating expenses, but like I said, it's all kind of tied together. So one thing that's been asked is how often we're going down to Ankeny, how often we're using those resources, what are those resources costing us? I found out just before our meeting in May that we've taken three hundred four cases there over the last three years. So I know during that meeting I kind of found out that we're using that a hundred times a year. So really we're at a hundred one per year over the last three years. Obviously that would be two hundred two trips if we made a single trip down for each time. So we're not doing that, we're packaging up as much as we can. But even those two hundred two trips a year, we're getting down to about fifty-two, roughly once a week. Once a week to Ankeny, obviously by the time we package things up, take it down there, check it in and/or check it out, get back here, unpackage it, get it put back in our evidence, we're losing one employee per week, give or take on that. That's time they could be doing other things, obviously, and just the resources that we're using. So basically point two of an FTE is being used right now to utilize the Ankeny lab as opposed to having stuff done here. We break that down, we do the mileage on it, we're talking seventy-two hundred dollars in miles for fifty trips there at a hundred miles each way, two hundred mile round trip. And then at a Step J employee, which is about a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, Step J's top deputy, which is where most of our investigators fall, sometimes it's actually a sergeant lieutenant or captain that takes that, which would make those wages even higher. So right now we're spending in today's dollars about, just shy of thirty-five thousand dollars a year to utilize the Ankeny DCI lab. If we didn't factor in any wage increases, any cost, anything else over the next fifty years, that's one point seven million dollars. We could probably pretty easily say that that's going to at least be twice that, if not more, by the time we factor in raises, costs, everything on that. So if you would just kind of keep that fact in mind, one point seven million dollars that we're using in today's dollars over the next fifty years. Then we go to the next one, our initial proposal on the operating expenses was seven hundred fifty upfront or as it's being done and then twenty-five percent of the actual operating costs. City came back with a little bit more on that, as it's going on, we're going to talk about what those expenses actually are. But I've got a little messed up in there, but you see at the, at the proposal that they sent us, that's one point four or five million dollars over the next fifty years. So we're looking at, if we keep doing what we're doing, not taking account inflation, one point seven million over fifty years, this is produced under one point five and those numbers are locked in, doesn't matter what our wages do, doesn't matter what other costs do, that's what we're at. So it's a little bit less in today's dollars, once you factor in everything else, it's probably half, if not a third, the cost on that. So, but I think is that something kind of what you were looking for when you've been asking about different numbers, that we're spending that kind of thing there?
Oh, definitely, I, I really appreciate the fact that you went to this much work after it had been approved previously. So I, I do thank you and it, and it's presented well, so. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Getting into what the actual operating expenses are, and again, this is probably one of the next agenda items, but since we're here, we'll just kind of roll through it all. I had anticipated about ten thousand a year just based on what we spend at the Raymond Range Training Facility. I didn't realize there are some other subscriptions that go in there that actually bump those costs up to about sixty thousand a year. I think we've all seen what, between not just utility expenses, but any of our contracts we have, any of our software stuff, they just keep going up and up and up too. So if we're looking at ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen thousand a year, I guarantee those sixteen. I guarantee those sixty thousand dollar operating costs are gonna keep going. I know, Michelle, you're kind of worried about, I mentioned, made a note in your email that uh give us as much control over what those operating costs are gonna be, or what's gonna happen to them. I would argue to the other that it gives us absolute control. Waterloo will not have any control over what uh their contracts are gonna be, what their rates are gonna be. Um we're gonna be locked in at a thousand, twelve thousand, fourteen, and up through that, so I think it actually gives us excellent control and excellent ability to predict what we're gonna pay, because it's gonna be written down. And then, oh, just one last thing on the joint use policy, um one thing we changed on that, um this is due to their accreditation, one of their officers has to be there at all times when we're doing stuff until we get one of our own officers. They actually staff it twice as much that we have people there anyway, so that's not gonna be an issue, and he does have it written in there too, that if there would be a need or we need someone in there outside hours, they'll have somebody there, so that's really a non-issue. And then we will have the ability to get somebody accredited, work on their own if we choose to down the road, so. So that was really a non-issue there. So. So again, the changes from what City Council did to what uh what you guys approved back on May twenty-seventh, to pretty minimal, and still a great opportunity for us. I know there's some verbiage things that are probably more kind of in the in the mics realm if there's any issues with that, but then I've got Chief Duncan here to speak to those as well, so. Any questions for me on anything, thus far, I know right now, we're actually technically just dealing with the twenty-eighty on it, so.
I think Linda agrees, you and A on the presentation.
Nate, can you go back to the slide about the annual costs, I mean, uh back one more, pardon?
Back to what our costs are?
No, what the cities with one more, I think it is.
So right there's where the city's got years one through ten, we would pay ten thousand per year.
But what their actual costs are.
Oh, I gotcha. So right now, again, that ten thousand is something that I I estimated, I don't know if they've been any estimates on that or not, but I'm gonna have to guess it's in that process. And again, Chief Duncan can probably speak to those subscriptions better than I can, I'm not familiar with what they are, what they do, but they're being used now, and they're something that we're gonna have access to once we're in there.
I guess that was gonna be my question, we're we're estimating just for operating that facility beyond utilities is another fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Chief Duncan, can you come and speak to that for us, please?
Morning, Board, Rob Duncan, Chief of Police for Waterloo. So yeah, uh our lab uh does an incredible job with processing things, but we also have the computer forensic lab, uh the subscriptions that go with the breaking into basically cell phones or extracting data off cell phones is really expensive. The city just approved a purchase for the Graciti software, which is an Apple-based software to get into Apple phones. Last night in a council, in a, is that thirty-four thousand, something like that, I think that was the the just that particular bit. We also have SelfRight, and several other uh software-based stuff, more getting into computers and phones that we have to do every year. We have been operating with that. What the joint facility will allow is is their investigators to come in, uh get trained on some of the software and be able to use that as well. That helps out at all.
Yeah, I was just kind of getting an idea of where these dollar figures are that came back from the city as a percentage overall cost of operating that. I was doing a tour through the building and had to sign in to go through the lab area myself, and then got quickly, you know, exited out. In the process, I understand there's more dollars than just the annual utility costs, if we're gonna be involved in something like this. So I'm just trying to get a percentage-wise with that, those dollars are compared to what we're looking at.
Yeah, what I was picking up was just just subscription-based uh software, just part of the computer forensic lab. And then when we talk about the federal scanner, uh that's a seventy-five thousand dollar piece of equipment that uh his folks will have access to and be able to use, there is upkeep on that. Warranty uh costs roughly ten thousand dollars over a several-year period. And then we will need to more than likely get a new one, hopefully get a grant for that, at least posted it pretty soon. Uh and I did add some things into the what things cost for us, you know, we we periodically, if we're gonna be doing it for fifty years, I guarantee us a lot of the equipment is gonna need to be upgraded. We do have quite a bit of new stuff right now. You know, we're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment that the city's already purchased. But again, that will need to be replaced periodically. I can't give you an exact percentage, this is just an idea of how much the city's already paying and what we're asking the county to to chip in as well.
One thing too, that you mentioned that I didn't have in my initial cost too, was like snow removal, lawn care, that kind of stuff, is additional factors, and I didn't factor that into what we spend out of, we kind of use man efforts on it, but um again, that's something that the real cost on it for the city actually go in greater tubes.
Is there anything that your certified lab has today that could not be done and would have to be shipped either to Ames or somewhere else that we'd still be looking at some outside costs?
Yeah, DNA, uh we don't we don't process DNA. Drugs, as far as like cocaine, methamphetamine, that stuff gets shipped as well, but most of the stuff when it comes to fingerprinting, getting everything put together and keeping in evidence, we we try to pull that in-house as much as possible, but yeah, the the stuff that the state does, there's some things that we can't do as well, but it's one of those things where if they've got stuff that needs to go down and we're going down, we can obviously take it as well and sign for it and then give it to them, so.
Just just curious here, roughly how many cases are we looking at that Sheriff's Office has every year that's drugs or DNA that would need to get sent down?
Lance, you can probably speak to that better.
So most of our drugs go through tricam, and I don't know the answer to that, because a lot of it we don't even see in our lab. And I'd have to go back and and um look in to see exactly how much we send out, how much is drugs. Probably don't have any idea off the top of your head.
No, I don't.
No, we don't, um. But in, yeah, I don't, I couldn't even.
Just trying to think, right, if we're if we're doing fifty-two trips a year, but we're still gonna be doing a number of trips for.
So he goes, what does that sound like?
What's that look like for us, what?
And and the DNA, a lot of it, we can wait a week or a month before we run down if we can on some of this stuff. Some of the stuff that Waterloo can do, that we can do together, that we can we can wait a while before we make a trip, especially DNA, we're doing a lot more with DNA, the lab's doing a lot more with DNA before burglaries and thefts, we couldn't submit them, now we can, and we got really good results, we have in the last two, three years. But so we send that down, it's worth the trouble.
Any else from A?
Not for you, I've got a question for Mike. So the twenty-eighty item B is about the seven hundred fifty thousand versus the ex- the operating expense on item C. I've got, I'll be honest, I've got two sort of main hangups. One of them is the 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 operating expense isn't a deal breaker for me, I would still feel more comfortable if we kept the twenty-five percent not to exceed the dollars that were already listed, but by extending it fifty years, I'm also I can I can get comfortable enough. The seven hundred fifty thousand upfront is probably where I've got the most heartburn.
Is that because of the operating expense?
Uh that's that's is the upfront. I I'd I'd be much more comfortable with reimbursement than um than upfront dollar.
Now, what it says in part C is it states, and this is on the revised uh with the city's revisions. The city shall provide to the county invoices for costs of construction and equipping the project. Within thirty days, receipt of those invoices, county shall issue payment to the city in the amount of one-half of the invoiced amount until the county expense a total of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on it. So that provision survived.
Okay.
It's my understanding.
Okay.
I mean, I, it's my understanding.
But it doesn't say the name.
Uh yeah.
Sorry, sorry, please.
I'm sorry. My question to Mike is that when I read that, it says the city's gonna send us an invoice. I don't interpret that they're going to send us a copy of the vendor's invoice.
Well, we we could add the the word vendor in there and send it back, I suppose. But you know, we should make, if we're gonna make any changes to propose to the city that they need to approve, we need to kind of get a punch list going here, so to speak. But certainly, we could add the word vendor before that, so we, because that was the intent of this provision.
Do you, because it was the, is the intent of that provision clear enough that we don't necessarily have to go through the additional step of sending it back, that we can just get this thing done, or do you think we need to specify that with another iteration of the back and forth?
Oh, you you see how two people can read a provision differently. I I personally believe that it's sufficient the way it's written, that if we ask the city for these uh vendor invoices, those wouldn't be kept from us, they are public record anyway, is my understanding. Uh so, but having said that, to, if it makes us feel better, we can add that word to it.
So I would like to say the city's intent to just send us a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar invoice, it's as the project moves along.
To be honest with you.
Yep.
I'll let y'all come back. So when I I got this agreement after you guys had approved it, and I started going through it, actually, Kalzman Bowson, thank goodness for him, he he's he reads fine print, and I'm like, oh, well, holy crap. I need to get into this a little bit deeper, but I don't remember ever changing anything when it came to the seven hundred fifty thousand and how it gets paid to the city from you folks. Needs to be an invoice thing, it needs to be, you know, laid out during the actual construction cost. And I can talk to, if need be, some of the things that I felt need to be changed. Fifty-year agreement should coincide with fifty years of operating cost, and then um there was a portion in there where if the county wanted to back out at fourteen years, three hundred sixty-four days, and just say, we're done, then we would have to pay the entire vote back to the county. And we didn't feel that was quite right either, so I prorated that based on a fifteen-year sliding scale. And then once the fifteen years is up, then it would be a mutual thing, uh but repaying would happen after that, so. We're definitely trying not to one-up anybody. Nate and I have talked extensively about this, we are one hundred percent in favor of what's been presented to our city council in the past, and what's been presented to you folks uh today. We really wanna get this going here because we are at the final stages of planning for this. We're gonna do something.
So you're looking at going out for bids soon?
Yep.
So when we're looking at vendors, I guess that's my question, what, know who the vendors are? That's basically, you're gonna have one general contractor that that checks and be getting written to?
Yeah, so when it comes to the building portion of it, it's probably gonna be on our planning and zoning engineering department for the city, uh but it'll be a communication with us uh and with the sheriff to make sure that.
Been having weekly meetings with the architects and stuff as it is.
That'll be a a joint venture to make sure that we're all on the same page.
There are just a handful of other, a couple of other uh changes to this that I wanted to make sure for this where there was a requirement under uh part four C, which was the provision they're just discussing. When in the version that the uh board approved.
Mike, I have a question, it are you, are these in addition to the Michelle's, the one she noted for us as well? Are they some of the same?
I think, I don't recall if they're in addition to hers, since I don't have her list right in front of me. But um one was just the fact that prior payment of county funds, the parties were supposed to disclose their funding sources, uh that is no longer there. And I think Michelle noted that one.
She did.
There is uh no longer, and I believe Michelle noted this as well, uh there is no longer a requirement uh that city provide the county documentation of its operating expenses, I think Nate kind of got into that with the discussion of some of the subscription rates and everything. And uh the city is no longer under an obligation to invoice us uh for the annual payment under this, at least uh my read of it, is that they no longer have to invoice us. Previously, they would have had to provide uh not only their invoice for it, but also the documentation of the annual expenses that they incurred to ensure that the county was not paying uh more than twenty-five percent of those, uh that no longer is their requirement in there.
Was the prorate that kind of makes that a a moot point there?
Sorry, those are your additional change, or things that you noted, some were Michelle's?
I just wanted to make sure, yeah, that we were we we were aware of those changes, simply because I know there was some discussion about those provisions back when uh the county approved uh twenty-eighty
There's also.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I know um Nate mentioned that he had forwarded the updated uh version to you, Mike, and you had re, I I assumed you were going to review that.
Yep, and I have.
And thank you, Michelle, I owe her an apology, quite honestly. Um after I looked at it and saw there wasn't a redline copy, I don't know how she found the changes as she did, and how much time that must have taken. So I apologize, Michelle, uh that we didn't have a redline copy. I guess my concern is why we didn't have some of those things that you had to go through and and look for, I guess that thirty-six month notice of termination. It would have been helpful just to see what those, why those things were changed, or the source of funding, why it was changed, um just for us to better understand, I guess, both parties, both sides of it, that's typically not a negotiation we're working through, but this partnership that we're working through. And um you know, typically, you'd have some discussion on why something was changed, or why something was questioned. Um and talk about that, and and I agree, thanks to Mr. Bowson, and thanks to you, uh Mr. Duncan too, as well as um working through this, Nate too. I appreciate all the work that's going into it, but we all knew the devil's in the details, and not just so much that there are things we need to catch, but just be aware of.
And I did have a redline copy, that's what I I forwarded both the redline and the clean to Mike, so.
I have a redline copy, although I'm not readily appreciating where the thirty-six month notice of termination shows up on here.
Uh I can look and find it.
Termination right now specifically, which is paragraph eleven. Uh I'm sorry, not paragraph eleven, but paragraph uh fifteen, which is termination prior to the expiration of the term.
I've got both my, the one you passed and the one that they sent out on our duration.
No, it is, it's it is under paragraph two, here we go. Um the agreement shall automatically renew for an additional five-year term, for additional five-year terms unless either party gives written notice to the other of their intent not to renew the agreement at least thirty-six months prior to the end of the initial fifty-year term or any subsequent five-year terms, that provision is still in there.
Yeah, that verbiage didn't change from the one you passed in May, so.
Well, the one I'm speaking of is what the, is it the, let's see, is it the duration on page one, maybe?
Yep, I I see, I've got Michelle's email where she listed that as a change, but I've got both
Yeah.
the copy that you passed and the copy that the city council passed, and side by side here, Linda, and that verbiage did not change.
So it's still thirty-six months, okay, well, see, it's those kind of things, like I said, that you'd just like to go back and and assure, it's just the working through it. I was hoping, and I'm really glad now, um when we talked about it earlier, putting it on, and I thought I hadn't heard from Mike that he had reviewed it before we were putting it on. So um Tabus went ahead and did that, and I appreciate the fact of us having it today to have some of this discussion that that helps. So I thank you for that, but it just seems like the legal review of it and what those things were, weren't relate to us, I guess, enough to just be, you know, just make sure that when we sign it and are done with it. weren't relate to us, I guess, enough to just be, you know, just make sure that when we signed it and are done with it, that we move on. That's what I think both parties are looking for. I love, I love the fact that you have such a good working relationship now.
Definitely.
As was, yeah, I was going to say, as with what others in the community with those rescuing those folks that were tubing and kayaking or whatever this weekend, so great effort, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're also getting much better PowerPoint, so.
I have to give alcredit to that for getting me the pro license where it gives suggestions on the side.
I was going to ask who did it, but I didn't think that was probably appropriate.
If we can throw the amount of time I spent building this little thing in on the annual costs, it'll, it'll up significantly.
Do you have any other questions on, on this resolution for the, for the twenty-eighty?
Well, I was just thinking when you were talking about some of the things, the seven fifty and, and not upfront and that type of thing, definitely. But I appreciate the fact that you, you're bringing that forward and I don't know if that's the will of the group to, to do some of that, but I prefer construction costs as I think it was stated.
Yeah, that satisfies my concern for sure.
So some of those types of things, I, I guess. I don't know where, are, are, it's up to you. If there's a decision there to go forward with it, there is. I just thought it needed a little more review and a little more confirmation of things that were changed. One of the things, you know, that I know was changed and maybe insignificant to others is the fact that they don't, didn't, we, both sides, and I think the county wasn't worried probably about ours. The city's not worried about theirs, but that giving the source, stating the source of funding. For me, that was really just wanting to know if the, if TIF dollars were used for this project. Because if they were, we already have a portion of those TIF dollars that were also, you know, giving to this project then. And that would be additional and just helpful to know. For us and taxpayers maybe, but things like that.
I'd be a lot more concerned if we weren't so involved with the whole process, knowing how much Nate's already been involved with the whole planning and working with the city in the whole construction process. That kind of alleviated a lot of my concern that way.
Yeah, I've liked the way that, yeah, Nate's been a part of this and working through it. That's been great instead of just telling us that this is how it's going to be, but thank you.
All right, well, we do have a motion and a second on the resolution. Go ahead and call the question. It's a roll call, please.
Curtin Buck.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
No, just because I want, I'd prefer to have more time to review it and then come back maybe next week or so, so sorry, but thank you.
Brant.
I think I'll have to abstain. Ms. Mike can tell me other ones.
Hall.
All right.
Thank you.
Item seven C, resolution to approve an updated operating expense agreement between Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office, City of Waterloo and Waterloo Police Department for annual payments by the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office to offset the annual operating expenses of the proposed evidence intake facility to be owned and maintained by the City of Waterloo and to be operated jointly by the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office and the Waterloo Police Department. The payment schedule will be as follows: ten thousand dollars annually for years one through ten, twelve thousand dollars annually for years eleven through twenty, fourteen thousand annually for years twenty-one through thirty, sixteen thousand dollars annually for years thirty-one through forty, and eighteen thousand dollars annually for years forty-one through fifty. So moved.
All right, as we talked earlier, I'm, I'm just looking at the percentages. What they're asking here and knowing what they're showing today, we're not even at twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
And that percentage is obviously going to get even smaller as the time of this goes on. I would venture to guess.
Yeah, my guess would be that there'd be a decent size increase. If pass is pro law, technology does not get cheaper. Law enforcement technology certainly doesn't get cheaper.
No.
Yeah, as much as I would like the twenty-five percent, just for if we're factoring all of these as defined operating expenses. I see it plays out. And it'll make sense to me if these would be defined operating expenses. You're not going to run a lab like this without some of these.
Equipment.
It's not, it's not just, it's not just.
Right, yeah, yeah. You can't use equipment without subscriptions, so.
Correct.
Need it out.
And residents are benefiting from expedited cases, not having stuff sort of stored. To your point, charging folks four, five, six thousand dollars to get all of these pieces. The, the whole project seems to make sense and.
Others pieces plus that piece.
Yeah.
Right there.
If I remember right, just the county, when we did our subscriptions for Microsoft Office, we were paying over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars just for our subscriptions. So just thinking of operating costs and just for basic computer stuff, I'm, I'm good with it.
Linda, did you have any thoughts or Chris?
Nope, I'm, I'm comfortable with this. I think it's, as Nate just said, actually, as the years go on, our percentage share is probably going to be going down just because of the nature of the rising cost of everything. So I think this seems, seems pretty good for the county.
Yeah, my comment on this would be the same. It's, it's probably fair to go out the, the number of years too for what would be. The, the more that these things change, the more I wish we'd maybe just looked at the twenty-eighty and, and a certain amount and moved forward. Because fifty years is a long time.
Marriage is forever new.
Oh, thanks, buddy. All right, with that.
You can do that comprehensively.
Yeah. We'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Layland.
You doing it?
Layland?
Uh. No, sorry. This was hard, this one, of all ones. I, I like, like I say, I like the project. I just.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brant?
Abstain.
Curtin Buck?
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. All right. Item eight A, motion to approve an updated joint use policy governing the joint use of a proposed evidence intake facility by the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office and the Waterloo Police Department. We have a motion. So moved.
And again, there's just the one change on that that I mentioned that is really a non-issue as far as I'm concerned. We're just holding with it, so.
What is the timeline of getting one of our folks certified for the crime lab?
What is the process to get some of theirs?
I think somebody, a little bit more full time, that is, but probably a year, I mean, take a little bit, but.
And getting one of our unaccredited, which may not be something we look at doing if we have, if we see the need for it, we can and we will, but otherwise we're perfectly content to make sure one of them is present. Like I said, they, they tend to staff a first and second shift. We're generally on their first shift. If there would be some odd need or we need somebody there at an off hour that's in writing and he's assured me that, that'll happen, so.
Okay.
So typically, this sounds like it's just clarification for the police department, actually, that we won't have access to it and be in there when we shouldn't be. Right? Correct me.
It's that we won't do any processing in the lab unless one of them is present, and that's circled upholder accreditation.
Yes, yes. I was going to say their qualification and things that meet that. Thank you.
We've got a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hold the same sign. Abstain.
Randy say aye.
I will too.
Abstain.
All right. Thank you, board, very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Item eight B, motion to direct the county auditors to advertise for public hearing to be held nine oh five on Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty-five, in Boardroom two oh one of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa. On the proposed ordinance number seven seven dash three zero zero, request by Andrew Winters to reason one point six seven acres of land from A Agriculture District to AR Agricultural Residential District to be able to build a single-family home located north of two, sorry, six one two four West Mount Vernon.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item eight C, resolution of the revised list of financial institutions to be approved as the twenty twenty-five depositories of Blackhawk County Funds in conformance with all applicable provisions of twelve B and twelve C of the Code of Iowa in amounts not to exceed the maximum approved for each respective financial institution.
So moved.
Second. Resolution, so roll call this.
Curtin Buck?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Hall.
Any reports or information from the board?
Part of the projects I'm working on with the Policy Committee is looking at our board appointments. Working with Lori and redoing some research. I'll be coming forward. There's a list of stuff that was printed back in August of seventeen. Some of these boards, I don't even know if they're still around or, but I, at this point, don't know if there's ever been anything that says they have been disbanded, no longer exist. So with Lori's help, I'm trying to do a little more research in that. I hope to be coming with you with more information, so.
My hope is that next week, we'll be able to have the local bidding on the agenda, so. I know it's made its rounds, a few iterations through policy review and, yeah, hopefully we'll be able to get that discussed here next week. Unless there's anything else.
This is Chris.
Yeah.
This is Chris. Last week, we had a meeting for the Middle Cedar River Watershed Management Authority. And we are getting every indication that an EPA grant that we applied for is going to go through. And so hopefully, then in the coming month, I'll be able to share that it's completely finalized. But it's a significant grant of about one point two million dollars. And part of the plan would be to have infrastructure projects happening in every county that's a part of the WMA. So hopefully I'll be sharing more on that, but it's looking like good news for us.
Glad to hear the EPA's still around. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Unless there's any other reports. Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.